Okay.
Okay.
Not following the hearing of Carbon County Board of Commissioners, please rise for a moment. Silence, prayer, and pledge allegiance.
Father, we thank you for each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room as well as the lives that we encounter afterwards. Set us free from comparison in order to work together efficiently, for only you truly know what we are setting out to accomplish today. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
These proceedings are being recorded for the sole purpose of preparing accurate written minutes. Recordings are overwritten following approval of the minutes, eliminating all unofficial records of these proceedings. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the Salary Board meeting held December 1st, 2022.
Move to it. You say Salary Board, Commissioner?
Right, Commissioner.
Salary Board. We open with Salary Board.
Oh, you open with Salary Board. Oh, okay. All right. Sorry about that.
Move to it first. I thought we were gonna get these out of the way. Okay.
Okay.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Mr. Sevortchev?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes. Are there any guests concerning Salary Board business at this time? Hearing none. Move along.
The report of executive sessions held.
There was one held on December 16th, 2022, 9:00 a.m. December 19th, 2022, 9:00 a.m. December 19th, 2022, 1:00 p.m. December 21st, 2022, 8:45 a.m. December 22nd, 2022, 11:20 a.m. December 23rd, 2022, 9:00 a.m. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call on the President Judge to go first to...
Point of order. Point of order one, the agenda is set. Two, a second point of order. According to Senate Bill 554, signed by the Governor on August 2021 in regards to notification of agency business to be considered. If we have a website or otherwise, agendas must be published 24 hours prior, which includes a listing of each matter of agency business. The fact is, the agenda that was posted failed to include the exhibits, which were a critical and essential part, but for all intent and purposes, part of the agenda. The preponderance of the motions on the agenda, 37 of 55, include detailed information that is provided to the public for review. It is only reasonable that the motions that indicate per exhibit should likewise be available to the public 24 hours prior, as precedent has set that the exhibit info information is inherent to the agenda.
When was that passed?
That was August 2020, 2021. We're all familiar with that, and actually, our own actions preceded that.
So, last year? It wasn't done last year in 2021 for that year, if it was passed in August, or '21?
Right, we failed to comply with Act 554, assigned by the Governor.
I don't...
Well, if I may interject, the, uh, the act that you're referring to does say that the agency shall post the agenda, which includes a listing of each matter of the agency business, which may or will be or may be the subject of deliberation of official action at the meeting. So, the, the question is whether exhibits are required to be included in part of the agenda. Now, um, i- if you actually go to the Office of Open Records, uh, there's a frequently asked questions section for, that pertains to the Sunshine Act, and it says that the agenda shall, should include all issues to be deliberated on in any planned official action, such as votes. So, I do believe that the agenda meets that requirement. Now, the exhibits themselves are proposed predeliberative material. That's, that's my understanding of this, and they could, they could change any time before the meeting, and in fact, they could be amended during the meeting, so, um, uh, we'll just have to agree to disagree.
Right, that's a good one. Thanks, thanks, thanks for your reading on that one.
Well, to begin with, you know, every year since I've been here, the, the courts have always gone first, and who told H. H. to change it, I had no idea. I didn't even realize it was changed, because when we got the agenda and everything, I don't really look at the agenda, I look at the exhibits, the study exhibits, who we're voting on, and until a little bit later, later last week, is when I noticed that, why isn't the courts up front like they normally are?
I believe there was an email trail going, and it was determined that that decision was made during an executive session.
Yeah, and I, I saw we did have a discussion on that change.
Mm-hmm. So, who instructed them to do that? It was a discussion, according to the email, uh, that I received, was discussion.
Well, I think our discussion would have been in the executive session.
And resulted in a decision.
Yeah, regardless, let's move forward.
A ne- negative point of order. You can't modify the agenda without a motion to have that agenda modified.
It'll be a decision, maybe in an executive session? That's the question, I think the Parliamentarian has to answer.
Well, no official action can be taken in an executive session, so, no.
What you're suggesting is that, is that the agenda was set in the executive session, which is official action?
Agendas can be set. Agendas are set in other than public meetings.
Okay, well, um, I'm going to go to Robert's Rules of Order here, uh, section 41, and I'm referring to the 10th edition, um, I'll, just irrelevant part, unless a pre-circulated agenda is formally adopted at the session to which it applies, it is not binding as to detail or order of consideration.
So, what was, would have been the reason to begin with, to move the courts to the end? Give me a good reason why you wanted that to occur.
I don't know if it would have been because we figured it might have taken longer and just given them the precedence to come in and, and leave, you know, instead of, I mean, I mean, I don't know, I mean, that's how I think it was done in the past, but I don't know what the issues are here, because there's one ma- motion made, and all the other ones have several motions, which is under this, what is it, appendix, whatever, what do we have for them?
Exhibit one.
Or exhibit, so, I don't know, did it look like it was less there than what the other ones were? I mean, and, and like I said, it was in the past, and I think I live in the present. I don't live in the past.
Your reason?
If I supported that particular agenda arrangement, it was for strategic reasons, which, a part of my strategy, which I would not divulge as I work towards supporting the best interests of the citizens of Carbon County.
That's exactly what I wanted to hear. Let's move forward, Your Honor.
Point of order. Then how is the agenda going to be like that?
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda, move the courts up to, uh, number five. I'll second that.
Mr. Sevortchev?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasevic?
No.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Any comments, Your Honor?
Well, I'm not conversing with Robert's Rules of Order as Attorney Pritchard may as he apparently has in front of him. I, I was always under the belief that the Chairman sets the agenda initially. I don't know if it required a formal decision, I think Attorney Pritchard mentioned that it had to be set formally at the meeting. So, if there's a law, we're not gonna have any meeting if it's gonna be a two-to-two vote throughout this entire session. It seems unfortunate. I do know that at least every time, I've been here before, the Court has obviously been recognized initially, which was a courtesy to a separate branch of government, as compared to separate offices. Apparently, this board does not want to extend that courtesy to the Court any longer, which is unfortunate. I think Commissioner Honor's comment that the Court's agenda is shorter than the others is realistically not true, that there are more positions on this agenda that are gonna have to be decided on behalf of the Court than any other department or office here. And I suspect it may come down to motion after motion after motion for a reposition. So, I think the Court probably will take some extended time to go through this. Like I said, this is the first time I can recall in history of this county that the Court has not been offered the courtesy of being able to go first.
Question. Why wouldn't the courts, since they are a voting member of Salary Board, have a vote in that?
In an amendment to the agenda? Well, I don't, I think, I don't think the agenda has been formally adopted, I think it's just a guideline at this point. As I say, and I don't take a position for or against, but I'm just telling you what Robert's Rules of Order say is that it's, it's not binding as to the order.
Does Robert's Rule of Order have a default position as to if the members of the board do not agree on the agenda? Which appears to be where it's going.
I, honestly, at this point, I don't know if it's just Chairman's privilege, or if that requires a formal motion, that's something that I would have to research.
So, I would just suggest that the Board would follow the practices that have been established by this board for years. I can't tell you how many years.
I think, I, I should, go ahead.
Obviously, it's a strategic move on behalf of my counterparts to disrupt this, uh, voting of the elected officials and of the courts to try to change things to their advantage. Just because they're going last, there is no reason why you can't vote what you want to vote on any of the row offices or courts under, or under the Commissioners' offices.
I would offer, if a citizen in Carbon County would want to come to this meeting, and I'm gonna withdraw that, and I'll save that.
So, I believe at this point, it comes down to the parliamentarian's decision as to whether Robert's Rule of Order, in the face of a deadlock, permits the Chairman to set the agenda for the meeting. I don't know the answer, I'm asking a question.
As we sit here right now, I do not know the answer, that's certainly something I could look at, but...
There's actually no note of other than to interrupt the process of our annual Salary Board for one's own liking, in total disrespect for the courts and the rest of the old row offices. I'd like to move forward with the courts.
Well, I'd like to move forward with you, but I don't want to have someone question the entire validity of the meeting.
Well, I, I think we need the parliamentarian to rule. I, I agree, I agree, yeah. So, I'd make a recommendation.
Okay, um, now, I'm, I'm looking at section 41. Regarding organizations and meetings in which adoption of a, an agenda is customary. It is customary to adopt an agenda or program for each session in organizations whose business sessions are separated by more than a quarterly time interval. And at conventions and other sessions which may last for several days. So, it, it doesn't appear that the agenda must be formally adopted, uh, under these circumstances, since this is a board that meets monthly. Again, I, I have no motive here, I'm just reading directly from Robert's Rules, um, so...
So, does the interpretation appear to be that at the Chairman sets the agenda for the meeting when they meet monthly?
I, that's the only implication that I can take from this.
So, then if it's okay with the Chairman, I would go first.
We will move forward with the courts.
Okay, thank you. So, first, I do hope that every one of you has had a happy, merry Christmas, and I hope you all have a happy, merry Christmas. I know the first motion on the agenda of the courts involves the adoption of the situation adjacent to the bodies by the courts. I think it's important to offer some preparatory comments to make more understandable that motion when made. As I believe every member of the Salary Board knows and understands, the Board of Commissioners, on December 8th of last year, handed out a salary scale for chart, and they adopted that, and it consisted of two pages. And it's my understanding that that scale that was adopted by the Board was not the same scale that was recommended by Evergreen, the agency who was employed by the Board to prepare the salary study. I also know that at that meeting, the Board of Commissioners, not the Salary Board, but the Board of Commissioners, gave the handout in which it apparently suggested where the positions of each employee for each office should be placed on that salary scale. It's my understanding and my belief that the intent of having the salary study done was, number one, to do an objective peer evaluation of all salaries within the county, to see that the employees of this county are being fairly compensated, and obviously entails outside survey. I understand in having, moving into executive session with the Commissioners, that the survey that was done by Evergreen in this case consisted of surveying, or at least attempting to survey 25 counties. They included the immediate adjacent counties to Carbon County, and they included at least one until six plus counties. I also understand in some of the materials that we subsequently received, that all, not all the counties who were approached and requested for information, provided information. I do not know, for those who did respond, whether the information they gave was based on 2022 salaries as compared to 2023, which were here for doc today. I know that Commissioner Lukasevic said that some of those counties already had built-in cost of living increases. I don't know what percentage, what numbers those counties had built-in cost of living increases. So, I don't know how fair and objective the, quote, outside survey was to say, fair compensation for employees in this county. for compensation for employees in this county. I believe and I hope that everyone on the salary board agrees that employees of this county are the most important significant asset that this county has. And I think it's important and critical that they be fairly compensated and that we do everything we can to maintain employment. The second, I think, objective of the survey, the survey study was, was not only to do an objective external compensation, but an internal equity among employees within the county so that employees within the county are treated fairly relative to one another. The handout that the commissioners gave on December eighth, which again was handed out with the scale, um, has been studied by myself and by court administrator, Ms. Han. And I've come to the belief and opinion that there are many inequities in that scale internally. For instance, the scale does not take into account the appointments that have been suggested by the commissioners, does not take into account the number of years that employees have served with this county or in their position. In several instances, and I can point for instance to secretary ones in the magistrate's office, we have people who are going to come to that position today, stepping in one day, and are going to get fourteen thirty-three an hour. You have people who have been in that position for three years, for six years, who are going to get fourteen thirty-three an hour. To me, that's a slap in the face to an employee who has served here for three or six years to say they are given no recognition for their service in this county. They will be treated the same as someone who steps in the door today. I think that's an internal inequity. On a number of occasions, grades have been set. And at least within the courts, there were various positions such as administrative assistants, technicians, specialists, where they do the same type of work and according to the handout given by the commissioners on December eighth, they are not given the same grade. I don't know why. I know that in one of the meetings I had with the salary board, they said, well, this was based upon the job descriptions that not everyone in the same type of job does the same type of work. I can accept that, accept that when we're telling internally within an office. So I understand that a administrative assistance in one county office may do something different than administrative assistant in the courts. But within the courts, the administrative assistants basically do the same type of thing. And I'm specifically referring at this time to the administrative assistants, referring to Kristen Leffler, Jerry Snyder, and Sir Sherer, where for some reason, Ms. Snyder, according to the handout, was given a grade of three A, whereas the other two were five, a grade of five. And I know in speaking with my court administrator, I've been assured that the type of work Ms. Snyder does is the same type of administrative work with the other two too. There should be no distinction in the grade that those individuals are given. So after studying, you know, what was handed out, and I, I should say as well that after receiving that information, we had a executive salary board meeting. I believe that is one that was scheduled on December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Prior to that meeting, we had requested some additional information, courts had requested some additional information as to how these surveys were done, what information was received, how choices were made, as to where people should be given. And we were given some information, I'm not trying to diminish that, we were given some information. Um, and we carefully studied that. And that prompted a lot of questions. It was helpful in many respects, but it prompted a lot of questions we had. So we did have an executive session on December nineteenth in the morning. And I appreciate the commissioners arranging that and allowing that. And I think we met for two hours, or approximately two hours. And I believe everyone will recognize with that then being that the court set a number of questions as to how this consultant had done things, you know, we asked a number of questions. And I know to the extent, I believe to the extent that the participants in that meeting had the answers they provided them, but in many instances, they did not have the answers to the questions we were asking. I'm not saying that anyone refused to give answers, that they knew. I think they honestly didn't recall or they didn't know the answers. I know that at one point, when the participants had said they had a brain dump and could not recall everything they were told by Evergreen. And they had been told that months earlier, and that they did not want to misrepresent things that were told. And I understand that, I'm not even arguing with that point. Uh, and I believe a suggestion was made, well, maybe we can get a meeting with Evergreen to perhaps answer some of the questions the court and perhaps others have. Attorney, excuse me, Commissioner Lukasevic arranged such a meeting, but it was given very short notes. And I'm not being prejudiced with the shortness, I'm just making a comment, it was given very short notice. The meeting was held on December twenty-third. Actually, when a storm was coming to the county where we called, the court left out, the county left out at eleven AM. I only learned of the meeting, um, the day before, around noon time. I believe that notices of the meeting had been given at about sometime after four, the day before, I emailed, but I didn't receive anything until the next day. Um, and my secretary, who receives all my emails, happened to be over the personal day off for her. So I learned about it maybe around twelve or one o'clock, I don't recall the exact time. And unfortunately, I could not make a meeting on the twenty-third of the morning because I was committed to court hearings for protection of abuse law. And I in fact was in court most of the morning, at least up until ten thirty, eleven o'clock. And I had contacted attorney, keep on saying attorney, I apologize, Commissioner Lukasevic, and said, I appreciate your arranging the meeting, I can't be there, I would have loved to have been there. I have a number of questions I'd like to have asked and answered, but I can't be there. Um, I know my court administrator did attend. And unfortunately, that same day that that meeting was held resulted in the date that we were told at the executive salary board meeting on the nineteenth. And we had to have our request in to the county that you needed those, I guess to put them on the agenda to have them advertised. So it was clear that having a meeting in the morning was not going to give us time to adjust anything we submitted. So I say that, um, in part because what we're suggesting, um, here had to be done very rapidly. Um, I believe the commissioners had the information from Evergreen by the end of September, at least according from my understanding from prior meetings and discussions by the commissioners. But we only got it literally within days before we had to have our submission, if we even had that much time. So we did the best we could, and we tried to create, we accepted in large part what Evergreen had termed for outside studies, and we tried to create internal equity in the submission. And so that's then we went to a revised submission that we had, which I'd like to now make a motion, excuse me for the coffee, um, to adopt and to compensate the employees in this county as listed on exhibit J one through J six that were body credited.
Second.
I'd like that discussion on that. And, I mean, I'm just like, we're changing the agenda, which if that's how it happens, but I think we always went how the agenda was set up. And, um, it doesn't matter to me where we start on the agenda. I'm going to say the same thing about every department. Uh, and I was involved in this from the beginning, and I just might have a different view than somebody else has. Um, you know, and I did not have a strategic move to try to set things up. Like I said, I can comment on every one of them. If somebody wants to move up and move another one up, I'm fine with it. But I prepared like a little statement for myself. Uh, during this whole salary study process, I heard, "We can't return, retain employees with such a low pay rate, and employees are not compensated throughout the scale." I agree wholeheartedly with that. "The adopted scale and proposed salaries included minimum wage was increased from eleven thirty-eight to thirteen dollars, raising the bar for all, placing employees on an appropriate grade and step in accordance with their current job description through the new scale. The new scale has started wages, positions that gained money through attrition." Um, and what I'd like to explain a little bit, like I think Judge, you were talking about if somebody leaves, um, if they're making twenty dollars an hour, they might be backed off to eighteen for a new employee coming in. And the county gains money through attrition through that. And that goes into the general pot that we can give decent raises for people instead of paying somebody the same amount that somebody left. Um, I mean, for example, uh, and if like if an employee would retire or leave, uh, some of the scales, if they would go back to step A, many positions could generate on an average five dollars an hour, putting ninety-one hundred dollars back into the fund to make yearly increases beneficial to the budget and the taxpayers. Now, I took an average of it because some, if you'd be at the, at that P and go back, it's probably three dollars, if you'd be at the top one, it'd be eight. So I used five dollars, so I don't need anybody contradicting me that I was wrong about that. So I'm trying to explain to everybody. "The salaries at the proposed rate were incorporated in the two thousand twenty-three budget. If the proposed rates are not accepted and any of the proposed salaries are changed, it will cause a domino effect across the scale that could cause a massive tax increase." And what could happen here, there could be people that are put, I mean, it was, they were put on the step according to this where they were supposed to be. So if one person is moved, next thing, the person below them wants to be moved up, the next person wants to be moved up, and then we're going to wind up being in this two-point-seven million dollar deficit. I think that somebody brought up before, that's going to cost. Um, from the beginning, my thirds, my thoughts were that this would be a two-step process. I was pretty adamant on that, that that's what it was. "The first year to place employees on the scale according to two thousand twenty-three wages. The second year to correct any discrepancies and work on a fair wage increase to all employers and the taxpayers." "Throughout today's agenda, I see salary increases or decreases and increases up to six thousand dollars without justification according to the job descriptions. Are we paying for the position or the person?" I understand employees got minimal or no increases at all. That is, that is my concern. I mean, I hear about it all the time, it is terrible that a person gets a two-cent raise. But I never tell any departments what to do. So now my question is, is it my fault that the job descriptions were not changed to reflect your employees' compensation? And then I'm going to say to everyone, and like I said, I've been trying to get this, that people get compensation what they should. And it doesn't matter if they're at the thirteen dollar, the fifteen, twenty-three, or thirty. If we don't start somewhere, we're going to be right back to the same thing again, and everybody's going to be back to eleven dollars an hour, and then we're going to sit here again and say, okay, we can't hire anybody. And I understand, maybe the person at thirty-three dollars an hour, maybe they should get thirty-seven, I don't know. But according to their job description, what we went through, that's what they're paid. I, I, and I can't say anything else. And it's, like I said, who, I, I wasn't in charge of anybody's job descriptions. I mean, this has been going on for a year and a half, and there were people coming in and had job descriptions changed here and there. But as far as I look at it, that's what their pay is. And, and if there's some that dropped out, that counties weren't incorporated in it, but we got our counties from surrounding, and that's what it came up with. And, and the benefit would be that all the job descriptions would be changed. Then we could give everybody up through the scale the appropriate salary what they should. Now we're just guessing at it. When we come into the salary board, we look at, huh, this one here, I think, yeah, they should be up maybe two steps. We don't have the knowledge of that. We're making it worse. And if, if we don't accept this study, then we're not accepting that it is bad. Like you, everybody thinks that this is bad, the study. So then I don't want to hear anything next year or this coming year that I can't hire anybody, I can't do this. Then what we should do is accept this and move forward and have these job positions changed. That's the only way this is going to be corrected. This has been, this has been a system like this for thirty years, and it's time to correct it. It's time to correct it through, everybody through the scale. Like I said, uh, Judge, there could be people there that should be making forty dollars an hour, I don't know. But according to what we got, that's what it is. And if somebody wants to come in and start, uh, you know, and there's a proper process to do this. You go through it if it's, if we're going to have an outside source, or we're going to have HR doing it, you revise what, what, what your job description is, bring it in, we'll discuss it, and it might be that we can have them salaries up to that rate. But I don't see anybo, anybody here that ever did something like that. I mean, throughout the year, we had some. But to do this at this point of where, like this was wasted money, and it was wasted time of everybody putting into this. And, 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 and I think it comes out like, oh, we put the people from eleven dollars up to thirteen. That was not the point. It was to get everybody on the proper scale and change their job description. And I'm willing, like, if, if, if this, if this don't get accepted, but to me, if it does, I'm willing to have anybody come in here or go to, to present your job descriptions and change it. But it's not going to change until we change the job description because we're going to go through the whole year again. We won't change job descriptions, and next year we'll be arguing about the same thing identically again. We might as well just take a copy of this, of this meeting and just do the same thing at the next meeting. It's going to continue and continue, and we'll never straighten the salaries out.
So part of the bottom, I believe, the actual job study that was employed by the county, the results of that study were not followed by the county in what they adopted, as they indicated at the outset. The Evergreen came back with a scheduled scale. That's not the scale the county commissioners adopted on December eighth. The county commissioners, for reasons particular to them, decided to shorten the number of steps. They decided to shorten the number of grades they condensed to scales. And then somehow someone decides to put in those scales every job position. And came out on December eighth, which is here where we think you should be. That's part of the salary board. That's why you have a salary board, because the full function of a salary board is to set the number of positions and the compensation. The salary board had absolutely no input into who got put where on that scale. The whole objective was to circumvent the salary board, which to me is wrong. But that's what that was. Now, what else didn't they do? The study that was done by Evergreen, according to some of the materials we had received, Evergreen had given the county various implementation options. The lowest, the very lowest implementation of it, option, according to what others provided, was to bring to a new minimum the closest step. And according to, again, the information provided by Evergreen, to implement that new minimum was going to cost eight hundred twelve thousand, two hundred eighty-three dollars and nineteen cents. And I was told at one point in one of these meetings that the county was going to be appropriating close to eight hundred thousand dollars to do this. Figures may have changed, I'm not sure. According to Evergreen on what they submitted, they said the average percent of adjustment if the new minimum was implemented would be seven point eight percent. That's the average adjustment, the average increase. I understand fully why the county wants to increase those at the lower edge of the scale. I understand that, it's justifiable. I think that also in Evergreen's study, they came up with the fact that eighty percent of the employees in this county are below the mid-average under their survey, which is deplorable, which explains why we're constantly losing employees. I believe within the last year, the county has somewhat in excess of four hundred employees. You've lost over a hundred. Twenty-five percent turnover in a year is again deplorable. The study was needed, the study was justified. But it seems to me the study should be then implemented in accordance with the recommendations because in effect, the county commissioner is saying, well, we spent twenty-eight thousand dollars to do a study from a, what we believe is a reputable outfit. We believe, we hope, they got credible comparables and brought that in, and then reviewed it to come up with their survey, went with their recommendations, but the commissioner decided not to follow that. Now, I understand, you know, what, what, you know, you're saying when you say about attrition. That makes sense. We're not talking about attrition in some of the internal equities that I'm talking about. We're talking about people who are in positions now. They worked their way up from the lower ranks, and they've been here for years. In some cases, they've been here for twenty-eight years or more, and they've been in a higher range. A lot of those people were given a... A lot of those people were given absolutely no, no percentage increase. We all know the rate of inflation has been historically high. I believe that even conservatively, we can say it's been seven percent. I've heard other numbers. Uh, I know, you know, that social security is giving eight point seven percent increase. Cause the cost of living, because they understand a decrease in purchasing power by people who are on social security. I know state employees have been given seven point eight percent increase. I suspect other retirees have been given increases cost of living, which is justified in light of inflation. With absolutely no increase, what you're telling these people at the higher end of this panel is not only are you not keeping them up with inflation. You are decreasing the value of what they're receiving. In reverse, someone who doesn't get an increase to keep some kind of parity with inflation. Is getting a six point five percent decrease in the effective purchasing power of their wages. To me, that's unacceptable. To say that someone who's been here twenty-eight years, not only are we not gonna give you an increase. We're gonna decrease your purchasing ability by six and a half percent. That, like I say, is one of these internal inequities that is being created by what has been handed out in those suggestions of where people should be placed. I understand it's gonna cost money. I understand we were all here at the salary board being either in August or September. In which the salary board, number of salary boards, including the courts, asked for a six percent increase. That passed, and but for the commissioners who decided not to fund it, it didn't occur. So again, Evergreen, their percentage increase overall was gonna be at seven percent. The six percent was justifiable and makes sense. It wasn't funded. So the commissioners knew that. As long ago as August or September, that different departments were looking for a six percent. And they had more than enough opportunity. I believe we were told at that time, the money's not there, the money's not there. We can't give it to you. Well, I don't know if that's true or not. I can, I can only accept what I'm being told by the board of commissioners. But we know you had four plus months to make arrangements to have the money there. To bring equity, not only externally, compared with surrounding competition, but internally. And for reasons that are, again, particular to the county commissioners, you decided not to generate those funds. I don't know, as I'm speaking now, if the budget that was passed by this board of commissioners. If it has allocated sufficient funds, dedicated sufficient funds for the salaries that are even being suggested by that handout on December eighth. Maybe it is. I don't know. It appears as though monies are always placed into a contingency, and that the amount of salaries that are passed are not fully appropriated. And so there's not even any earmarks in contingency that this is gonna be dedicated to salaries. So again, as I'm speaking now, I don't know if the salaries that were suggested by the board on December eighth have even been fully funded yet. If the budget has allocated full, a hundred percent funding for those salaries, and maybe you know the answer to that.
I can tell you right now, it is. There, there's money there for that.
Has the budget been allocated? Has it been allocated to earmark for the salaries?
I think we did because, yes, yes, there.
And that's, that's, I'm glad to hear that. I, I, in the past, I don't believe it has been.
Yeah, and, and the, the money for that is allocated. And, and I said, uh, going back to it, I mean, people are looking at different ways here. And this was to correct the salaries and bring them up to where they should be. If the county would have had an additional six percent. I wouldn't have had no problem, because like, I think this morning, Judge, uh, even in your talk this morning, that the people are valuable. I think all of our employees are valuable. But I also look at the taxpayer. I mean, we don't have six percent extra to give that. Um, and like, uh, what, what I'm proposing here, I think these should still be accepted. And try to correct what we have. And I said, I don't think, you know, and, and you talk about the, the, the percentage, whatever, you know, if it's nine percent or eight point nine. There's a lot of people out there that are taxpayers that might only get a thousand dollars a month. They can't afford an extra two hundred dollars on their taxes. So I think for us, we have to balance both ways. We have to balance the taxpayer, and we gotta balance. The way that, that we pay or, or compensate our employees. And I said, there's a lot of things in here where I see, and, and there's some in this agenda that I agree with. We're getting rid of two positions or three positions and creating another job. And I think everybody in this room knows that I do not like part-time positions. Because you're not gonna get people to come here part-time and not have benefits. That's a lot of what they want, and I like them things that's in an agenda. There's a lot in here that works with the salary and correct over the next year. And I'm going back to it. If we don't accept, and I'm telling you, that money is in there. That, that was proposed, that the commissioners sent out, that money is there. Then people are not gonna lose that money, nobody, and move on. If this is passed, then we start tomorrow, try to correct these. Like, why are we sitting here arguing over something if I'm right or you're right? You know, it, it just, and, and I understand where you're coming from, and I still go back to it. We had a broken system, and we gotta fix it, and this is the start.
I, I don't disagree that the system needed to be set. I really don't disagree with that. Like I said, and I don't wanna be repetitious, because this means it's the way it is. But I think I was told in one of our meetings that this is phase one of a three-page, three-phase implementation. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but I think that's what we were told.
And what I would want, like, I mean, I don't wanna cut you off, but like, like for this year, we allocated, say, uh, eight hundred thousand. For next year, I would want six hundred thousand. That we could have people and, and have people up to the proper wage that they should be at. And I might be pretty bold on saying that, and I can risk, like I said, I'm not here politically. I'm here to correct things correctly. I'm not running for, you know, uh, trying to run for commissioner for next year. I wanna do it right. And if it comes to it, and I'm saying, we need six hundred thousand. When this first all started off in May, I went into our account and I said, what do you think? I said, I figured this all out, it's eight hundred thousand for this year and six hundred thousand for next year, to correct it where the people, and on my scale. And my scale, people are higher than what's on this. I can tell you that.
But if, and I'm just accepting what you just told me. If you dedicated eight hundred thousand this year, you were literally twelve thousand away from what Evergreen was recommending under their minimum. And you decided not to adopt that minimum. And again, that was gonna give, on average, a seven point eight percent increase to the employees of this town. Had, had, if there is a three-phase in projection.
Yeah.
Again, I don't know. I know I just heard what you said, that you're perhaps the six hundred thousand should be dedicated next year.
Mm-hmm.
I would think that it would have been better to gradually phase in across the board. To give everyone some understanding of benefits of the phase in. And to announce and to put out what those phases are, so that people know in advance. Well, maybe I'm not gonna get everything in phase one, but I see in phase two it's coming, and in phase three it's gonna be completed.
Mm-hmm.
Right now, there is no comfort, there is no assurances that phase two and phase three will even be implemented or funded. Uh, and I'm not trying to be critical, it's gonna be a different board, maybe the same people, I don't know, but it's gonna be a different board.
Yeah.
Next year. We don't know if phase two and phase three will be in there. But phase one is implemented, like I said, it may be objectively. Fair, I don't know, because I don't know all the information that Evergreen took into account. But internally, it's created, I think, some egregious, some truly egregious problems. And what is at risk here is to help people at the low end. The people who are the most experienced, the most knowledgeable, the most trained are the ones who are being stepped on. And are not getting given fair compensation, and we may be seeing some of them leave. I hope we don't, but we are risking that. We are risking basically the, the age experience of our county employees from leaving. And then where are we gonna be? We're gonna be in a heck of a bad shape, because it took years and years to train them and educate them to know their jobs. And those people can leave at a moment's notice. Uh, I know, I know, for instance, just in court reporter. The study that Evergreen came back with said they are four point eight percent below the peer. That's where, we didn't even bring them up to the peer. In fact, in court reporters, nothing was given to them under this proposal. Um, so i- 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 it's, I'm critical. I'm sympathetic with your objective of being fair paid, because it has to be done. But I'm critical of the way it's being done, and, and that's why I'm saying. You know, mishandling myself, spent hours, literally hours, going through information we provided, and we had to get additional information as we went along. And, and much of it, I believe, was provided. I'm not sure we had all of it, and I'm not being critical by saying that. But it took the county apparently two months to evaluate the information, to come out with a wage scale. We were given a week or two to come up with it. What we've come up with, I don't believe is ideal. I believe it probably has to be changed, but it's the best we could do with the short time we were given. And I think, I'm convinced in my mind, it's much more fair and equitable overall.
And I, and I think with even, I don't know if you took notice, like last week, we actually made it that, uh, the budget is gonna be adopted before the election. Um, so I think that's a, a move forward. And like I said, I, I'm not gonna change my mind to get to that next step. I mean, and, uh, I mean, I, I, I don't think I can say much, anything else, but.
No, no, and I, and I, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
You're gonna have earlier discussions on the budget.
Yeah.
But, but keep in mind, I mean, for the budget for this year.
Yeah.
The board, Fokker Lee surveyed each department, and they said, what are your budgetary requests? And I believe everyone gave you what we thought we needed, you know, the courts did. And, and I said this earlier, we did not pad our budget, we did not inflate our budget. We put in our budget what we thought was necessary and justifiable to keep the courts functioning. So, so there was a budgetary meeting we had. And then we answered, I think, all the questions that we were asked by the commissioners as to why our budget is what it is. And then within a week or two after that, we get a budget put out by the county. That basically decreases court administration by twenty-five percent in budget. We were never given no heads up that that's what this board wanted to do. Um, overall, all court, and that was just the court administration line item, was decreased by twenty-five percent for projected. Overall, when taken into account, all court functions, including magistrate, it was decreased by twelve percent. The reality is, is what the budget was that was passed. Decreased the court budget by six point five percent of what it is in two thousand twenty-two. That was done without any explanation, without any input from the court. And I don't know that any business, and that's what county government is a business. Can project that their expenses next year are gonna be less than they were in the previous year. And yet that's the budget we were faced with and were given.
Yes, it's not a budget meeting, but I will say there's that.
I was just picking up on, on, on some of the comments you made by DeBronski.
Sure. But I know we were all rushed into this with no or very little time. For the elected officials and the courts to, uh, really have any say within the what grade people were placed. I know one of the things I was worried about was, uh, trying to group more people together, which sure didn't happen. But, uh. It's a shame, yes, the money was put there for the budget, that amount as was presented originally. But there is nothing more really set aside for salaries as requested by our elected officials. I was really disappointed that this board, I don't wanna hear this excuse, the money's not there. Well, this board is the one that puts that money there, that makes that money available to retain the employees. If we lose some of our valued employees with more time, years, over thirty years in more cases. If we lose them, you're not gonna replace them for what you're getting them for now. Mr. Honor, you made the statement, you're ready to start tomorrow in fixing this problem. Can we fix it this year before the end of June?
I would say yes. I mean, we, we can put it this way, we're gonna start the process. And first of all, somebody just can't come in and say, I want the job description changed. There has to be justification to that, you know what I mean? It's not, not everybody can make a mad rush and say, okay, I want everybody moved up because I do something a little different.
We're gonna commit to correcting this and. Doing something for our senior employees, our valued employees that have been here for a long time. Cause they are not replaceable like you think.
I never said they were, but I think it, and like I said.
Comments, I don't wanna hear a comment, so if you don't like it, there's the door.
Um, I don't think I ever said that, so don't put words into my mouth. Don't, don't put words into my mouth.
I said, I don't wanna hear.
But, but I'm just saying, we're sitting here and I do value our people.
Time to move on.
Yeah, let me go ahead and have my comments, and discussions don't end according to parliamentary procedures until, uh, actual vote is made on any discussion. So I'll, I'll take my couple minutes here. Judge, thank you. I think you did a pretty good job of representing the study objectives, which were for. Internal equity, decreased pay equity between low and high earners. External equity, looking at peer organizations. Target between the forty-fifth and fifty-fifth, forty-fifth and fifty-fifth percentile in reducing pay grades and scales. So we measure the success of the study by its results and what was accepted of that study. Uh, Evergreen was not aware that there was a eight hundred thousand dollar constraint, uh, or restraint. Uh, when they were doing the study. What they did do is they recommended bring to a new minimum closest step, which was about seven hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Which didn't include a five percent retirement contribution from the county. Nor did it, uh, take into account, uh, the FICA and Medicare, six point two and one point four five. Uh, for the Medicare respectively. We were presented seven options from about eight hundred thousand dollars to two point seven million dollars. We chose, based upon the constraints, the restraints, and the objectives, the best option that was out there. What did that result in? Not a seven point eight percent or so that Evergreen recommended. Three hundred and thirty-five adjustments with an average increase of ten point eight percent. Average increase of two thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars per employee. Add another a hundred and ten dollars for the retirement contribution the county is making. A hundred and ninety-plus positions increased over seven point one percent, which is the most recent CPIU. Oh, well over two hundred positions greater than five percent. Non-supervisory increase, which was important to us, twelve point three percent increase. Supervisors increase, on average, four point three. Minimum wage, and Commissioner Honor mentioned, eleven thirty-eight to thirteen dollars for non-supervisor minimum. Coming into a county position, which we knew was critical to get employees in here. Then supervisors from thirteen forty-one to sixteen dollars minimum. Right? We hit our target, the forty-fifth percentile, desired market position. We significantly reduced both the grades and the scales. So I, I would argue it was successful. It wasn't pers- perfect, but it was a successful salary study, and we took the best out of that study. And have made a proposition or motions to implement that with the complement. That we previously provided and the budget that was approved, uh, for salaries. Even Evergreen recognized that we had to implement an appeal and challenge process for possible misalignments of classifications and salaries. And all of us are committed to doing that, but I am committed to doing it when the dust settles. I'm not willing to start tomorrow, right? The dust needs to settle. We need to step back, take a breath, and then figure out a methodical way ahead to address reclassification, updating of positions. And I wanna, again, wanna emphasize the important role that HR played in quality assurance and quality control. Cause we did get a good product, and we got a good product because of the four ladies down there who put in a tireless effort. Uh, to bring it to realization. That's all I have.
You brought up about all the extra costs, FICA, insurance, and all those extras, but yet. You failed to put anything in the budget or increase the budget to cover salaries or, or any of those additional expenses. Let's move on. We.
So I think we had a motion in a second.
We do have a motion in a second. We'll call for the vote. Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Silverchak?
No.
Mr. Honor?
And this is for what?
For this whole exhibit.
For the J one through six, or the, for the J one that was revised? No.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Okay, then I guess the easiest way of addressing this is to move through the positions, line by line. And I'll first be addressing the positions on exhibit J one, which deals with law files. I'm not sure if this board. I'm not sure if this board realizes this. I was only brought to my attention, I believe, a week or two ago, by Mr. Honor. Previously, the law clerk was compensated by additional one hundred dollars a month, which was paid for by the bar. Apparently about two years ago, the bar ceased paying that. I'm unaware of that, but I was brought to my attention. So each of the law clerks was getting not only what they were getting on your salary termination, but an additional twelve hundred dollars a year. The proposed salaries for each of these positions submitted in the handout by the commissioners on December eighth is actually gonna result in a decrease in the payment total compensation, net compensation to each of the law clerks in this county. And I'm not sure if you were aware of that, but that's a reality. So I don't know exactly which positions, I mean, I know my overall motion for these J one through J six failed, but I would then ask that with respect to the law clerks, that on J one, that they be compensated, one law clerk at a grade twelve, step E, one law clerk at a grade twelve, step C, and one law clerk at a grade twelve, step P. I also want to indicate, so the board is aware of this, that the highest paid law clerk, who is currently the law clerk for J six, and that is Michael Fatschotch, will be leaving this month. And he is leaving because he's got another job, because by knowledge, it pays more than what this county is paying law clerks. I also know that there was a recent article in Statewide Legal Intelligencer that said that it's become very difficult for trial courts to pay law clerks. They don't give any specific explanation why that is, but it's a reality. I know that I've gone at times without a law clerk for over a year, because we could not attract people here. I know that, I'm not sure the exact date, but perhaps eight or ten years ago, there was a survey done and the county commissioners had agreed to increase his hours of law clerk to make it work comparable with other counties, and it seemed to work for a while. But right now, what I'm indicating to you is that what was suggested by the commissioners in the handout, it is what that sort passes, it then actually results in a net reduction in payments to each of these law clerks in this county. And that's why I made the motion I have to establish their grades and steps at twelve B, twelve C, and twelve D.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Silvercheck?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
And then we have, next on J one is a motion for two law clerks, which are temporary positions, at a grade twelve, step A. I believe that is no change from what was suggested by the handout on December eighth.
And which one was this, the one?
It, it's two law clerks, and it says in print that it's temporarily. I'm going off of J one, you know, Commissioner Honor.
Okay.
And my motion has been established on those compensations at grade twelve, step A.
Oh, you know, what I have to do.
As I indicated, I believe that's no change from what was handed out by the board on December eighth.
That's correct, it's the same.
That's what I'm saying. So I need a second to that.
Yeah.
A second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Silvercheck?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
And this, was that no change or something?
No change from what they handed out on December eighth.
It stays at a twelve A, Commissioner Honor, at forty thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty cents.
Okay. Yes.
Okay, Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next are the court reporters for the county. And I make a motion to approve their grades and steps in the order shown on exhibit J one. And that would be a grade ten, and it's quote, off the chart, off the scale, because the scale that the county adopted does not even include some of these positions, because they've been here so long. Obviously, this person has been here for twenty-eight years. So it's a grade ten, step unknown, but hourly rated thirty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. Next one is, again, grade ten, step unknown, at an hourly rate of thirty-two dollars and seventeen cents an hour. And next is a grade ten, step unknown, of thirty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents. Now, for these particular positions, the oldest is an individual that's been here for twenty-eight years. The next court stenographer has been here for fifteen years, and the most recent has been here for one year. Court stenographers, and you would not be aware of it, and you have no reason to be aware of it. Court stenographers are extremely difficult for courts to get these days, very scarcely. I don't know why that is, but that's been the case for a number of years now. Courts are lucky to get court stenographers. Approximately two or three years ago, we lost one of our court stenographers to Burke County, who paid her, I believe, about twenty thousand more a year than this county offered. So these are, you need them, operated courts. Some county counties are going to court monitor it, which is not anywhere near as efficient or appropriate or accurate in terms of creating records, as court stenographers are. Evergreen, in their study, when they made a comparison between what the actual wages are here in Carbon County for court stenographers versus the peer, they said we're four point eight percent below the peer. So not only are we not keeping them up with, quote, inflationary rates or compensation, we're not keeping them on the peer level. And unfortunately, we have this of losing it. For reasons that I'm not quite sure, the county decided to change the grade of court stenographers in the, I guess, handout that was given. The county decided to set the grade of the court stenographers, I believe, I gotta find this, at a grade ten. Evergreen had proposed they be at a grade eleven. The court, in its proposal, is keeping them at a grade ten. So I believe the motion that's being made is appropriate and is a fair compensation rate for our court stenographers, and hopefully we won't lose them.
Question or discussion, since they are at it in this scale and since in, like in the district attorney's office, we have some set wages, like for the full-time DAs, et cetera. Would this be a position we should look at making a set salary within compensated with additional years? You mean, no?
They get paid for their transcripts, and if you set a salary, you'd have to incorporate that transcripts into the salary. And we never know how many transcripts or the amount of transcripts they're going to be giving out per calendar year.
So they're, they're paid above?
Yes.
This ten percent increase that they're asking for?
Yes, that is correct.
The five percent increase?
Almost every pay, there are transcripts that are submitted with payroll that could be as little as a hundred dollars to a couple thousand dollars that are submitted based on transcripts that are requested and that are provided, and they charge a flat fee per page.
It varies from year to year, I mean, Dawn is correct. And I think each county handles it differently. I did not through a survey to see how many do it one way versus another. To my knowledge, I mean, as long as I've been here in the county, they have gotten a transcript A. The Supreme Court of Pennsylvania had several years ago adopted what the compensation rate is for transcripts that will be put on bill to other people. And, and we follow that compensation rate, I believe, because of our intention to do so. And yes, so, so having that additional income through transcripts, which is unreliable, but it's significant. I mean, it helps, I'm not saying it doesn't help. But even with that, and that transcript rate was in there when we lost the employee I saw about two, two or three years ago, because it was offered twenty thousand more a year than Burke County. That was taken into account, which was getting on transcripts.
I mean, continue to bring up Burke County as a red hair. The fact is, we, we don't compare ourselves to Burke County. So I would ask that in the future, we don't use that as a comparative, because it's not comparable.
I'm not suggesting that we compete with Burke County. What I'm saying is, is that the vast disparity in which he was offering them gives some significance as to how low we are in compensation. And I'm also saying that in the studies done by Evergreen, they indicated that what we pay is four point eight percent below the peers.
But they did say we're twenty thousand below our peers. They said at the time, we were four point eight.
That's, that's what they said in there, four point eight, that's true.
Four point eight of that salary doesn't equal twenty thousand dollars. That's why I'm saying, it's, it's not a good comparison. It sounds good, 'cause it's a big number, but it, it's not a.
I'm not asking for an increase of twenty thousand per stenographer, that's not what I'm saying.
No, but you're using that as your argument.
I, I'm using, no, I'm using that in part to show that we are not paying necessarily as much as other counties are, and that it is very critical, I can say statewide without hesitation, that county's courts are having a very difficult time employing court stenographers. When we apply, when we have a vacancy, it takes us generally months before we can get someone, because they're not there. And it's, it's a supply scarcity, it's a compensation diminishment. It's a combination, and they are very difficult to get, and that's just a reality. So I'm not sure if I, if there's been a second somehow.
No, there isn't. Is there a second?
I'm sorry, I'll second that, is there?
And, and this comes out almost to eleven thousand dollars for three employees.
All right, plus their transcription.
Yeah.
Okay. Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Silvercheck?
No.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
So then I'll take them in the order in which they appear by line item. So the first, I had asked for thirty-five, thirty-four an hour. I'll make a motion to approve that position at thirty-four, ninety-seven an hour, which is again a ten without a step, because all of these are off any scale you've adopted. That's two point five percent below what the original motion was.
That was the motion?
Oh, that was the motion, yes, I'm standing.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Silvercheck?
No.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
So we have to set compensation for these employees. So my next motion is to approve a salary for that position of thirty-four, twelve an hour, which is a grade ten, again, off the chart.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Silvercheck?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
And where's he going to now, the thirty?
Thirty-four, twelve. They're all two percent, two point five percent, I believe, two point five percent commission. So this is five percent below what I originally moved.
No.
No. Mr. Lukasewicz?
No.
So I can leave that pass?
Mr.
I'm sorry.
Notstein?
Yes.
That passed, three to two?
Yes.
So the next line position, I would move, I previously moved for a thirty-two, seventeen an hour. I will now move for thirty-one, thirty-eight an hour, which is two point five percent beneath what I had previously moved for.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Silvercheck?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
And that is only ballpark, and I appreciate a pass, that is only ballpark about a two point five percent or less increase from what she is currently being paid. As I've indicated, a six, a seven point inflation rate, that's a deduction in her salary of six point five. So we're not even keeping up with that, unfortunately.
If that's, is this discussion then? In discussion, the fact is, from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one, Carbon County increased the rates of its employees paid by fifteen percent, whereas CPIU was eleven point five nine. So it's a three point four one salary increases beyond the CPI, so you can subtract that from your comments.
Well, again, Evergreen's old study said they are four point eight percent beneath the peer. So notwithstanding those adjustments by the county in the past, it did not keep up with the peers. And that, I think, pretty evident, from Evergreen's study. Next court stenographer, I had requested a motion at thirty-one, thirty-eight an hour, two point five percent beneath that, is thirty dollars and sixty-two cents an hour, which is a grade ten. Again, step one, although it's off the chart.
Thirty-sixty-two appears to be along with what the board of commissioners proposed in its complement for those two certified court reporters.
Is that what your answer was, thirty-sixty-two, or not?
Well, yeah, it's two and a half percent beneath what I had originally moved for, and it takes us back to what the county had proposed, which, again, is a zero adjustment to what this person is making. They're getting nothing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Silvercheck?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
The next three are the judicial secretaries for the judges in the county. And following along on J one, this is my motion, I'm taking them as a group. First one, lead judicial secretary to move for food compensation at grade seven, step O. Next is a grade six, step P, and next is a grade six, step L. And that's a motion.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Silvercheck?
No.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Okay, and then I'll take them one by one. For the lead judicial secretary, I would move for a salary at a grade seven, step N, which is twenty-four dollars and two cents an hour. And I'll leave it at that for now.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
And I just wanna have a brief discussion on that, I wanted to wait till you had a second on that. The county, in their proposal for judicial secretaries, had, for reasons that are unclear to myself, had decided to place all of the judicial secretaries on the same grade, the grade six. Previously, under the old scales that were used by the county, the grades of the judicial, lead judicial secretary was one grade higher at eleven, and the other two at a ten. Evergreen, in their study, has suggested that the lead judicial secretary be a grade ten, and the other two a grade eight, in other words, the lead judicial secretary was two grades higher. And that's quite simple because of the additional responsibilities that the lead judicial secretary has. So that's some of the inflator, or, I guess, reasons for my motion for the lead judicial secretary at a, we'll get back to where we are here, at a step, excuse me, a grade seven, step N, twenty-four oh two an hour. I think we're in discussion, so I guess we're in the vote now?
Yes. Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Silvercheck?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
The next judicial secretary, the motion is to approve the compensation at a grade six, step O, which comes to twenty-three, forty-four an hour. And I will say as well, in complement of that motion, I wanna make sure here we have, this is which one, tell me. Okay, this would be misfederated. What we were proposing in my original motion would have been a six point three, three percent increase. This obviously is two point five beneath that, so we're now under four percent with that motion.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Silvercheck?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
My next, the third judicial secretary, the motion is to set compensation at a grade six. My next, the, uh, third judicial secretary, the motion is to, um, set compensation at a grade six, six K, which equates to twenty-one dollars and sixty-four cents an hour. The original motion would have given that person, I believe, like, uh, so much information here.
Twenty-one twenty-four. It's twenty-one twenty-four.
No, I, I-
You said sixty-four. Twenty-one twenty-four.
Okay, okay, twenty-one twenty-four. So that's the original motion would have been an eight point three percent increase. It was obviously based on under six percent. So that's a motion for a grade six, step K, at twenty-one twenty-four.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasevic?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Now we're dealing with the administrative assistants, and again, I'll take them as a group, um, again, in the order they appear on J one. So, um, first is a motion to set salary at a grade five, step L. Um, next is grade five. I, grade five, it looks like an L in the I. First is a grade five, step I. Next is a grade five, step C. Next is a grade five, step A.
Second.
And under discussions, um, I would note that this is, this encompasses a position of Sherry Snyder, who I referred to earlier in my preliminary comments. Um, all of the administrative assistants, with her exception, were set at a grade five. For reasons, again, that are unclear to myself, um, in what was handed out by the commissioners on December eight, they put her at a grade three. She is the position I indicated, who basically does the same type of work as the other two administrative assistants. I mean, I had confirmed that with the court administrator. Uh, I'm not sure why she's been given a grade five. She also, from what I understand, and I don't know, um, where this came from, but apparently, um, she is a recent hire. She has only been here for about six months. And apparently, when, when the amounts were recommended, there was no information even reviewed by Evergreen or perhaps anyone else before setting her at a gr- at a grade three. So I think I'm accurate on saying that. So again, my motion is to set them all at a grade five at the various steps I've indicated, um, including her, her being upgraded from a grade three to a grade five. And that is a motion.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
No.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasevic?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
So then I'll take them, again, in the order in which they appear on J one. Uh, the first administrative assistant would be to set compensation at a grade five, step H, which amounts to eighteen seventy-eight an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
No.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasevic?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next for that position, since that did not pass, the motion is to approve compensation at a grade five, step G, which equates to eighteen dollars and thirty-two cents an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasevic?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
The next administrative assistant, um, the motion is to approve compensation at a grade five, step B, like in board, which is sixteen dollars and twenty cents an hour, which will be probably about a three percent increase. The original motion had put her at six point five five percent.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasevic?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
The third administrative assistant is obviously the most recent hire. I referred to her by name, Sherry Snyder. Um, and the proposal is to compensate her at a grade three, step A, which actually is the amount that was proposed by the county because there was no lower to go. I mean, if they're at a grade five, step A, which is the lowest you can get, this is a grade three, step A, which will compensate her at fourteen thirty-three an hour, which is basically what a person walking in the door and a lot of these other secretary one positions are getting in magistrate offices.
So clarification, so you originally had fifteen eighty on yours, is that correct?
I did, yes, I did.
Okay, all right, just making sure.
And I said, and I said, cancel order, so that was a five A.
Mm-hmm.
So this is taking it to a three A.
I'll second that.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I called out a word here. Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein again?
Next is the one summer law clerk position. The motion is to approve compensation at a grade six, step A, which is no change from what was suggested by the county commissioner on December eight.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
And this is establishing a-
The summer law clerk, and this is, this is what was proposed by the county commissioner on December eight.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next on the six, catch gas, and the motion is, is to, if there are per deal employees, to approve their compensation at a hundred thirty dollars per day, which is no change from what was suggested by the county commissioner on December eight.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next, I'll go to J two, which is the important computer information systems. Um, either of these positions that are on there are different than what was suggested by the handout of the commissioners on December eight. So I'll make those motions together. I don't see whether there should be any controversy or any disagreement. Uh, the one is for the director, supervisor rate of grade ten, step A, and the IT specialist at a grade seven, step A, especially that's twenty-four eighty-two an hour and seventeen twenty-two an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
He has.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next will be J three. And these are different magistrate offices, um, office supervisors as well, secretary one and two, who knows positions. And just as a clearly comment, this is, uh, in part, this, this deals with the case I told you about where we're dealing with secretary ones. And here, what was proposed by the county commissioner for secretary ones, um, for the most part, for people who just walk in the door and get fourteen thirty-three an hour, whereas people who have been here three and six years get fourteen thirty-three an hour also. And that appears to me to be internally unfair. There was also, I believe, in here, well, I guess we'll have to deal with them one by one. So what I'll do, um, I'm trying to make this efficient and as expeditive as we can. So I'll, I guess, I guess I'll do them by magistrate offices, because maybe it's the best bet. So under Jim Thorpe, office supervisor, the motion is to approve a supervisor rated at a grade two, step, is that an I or L?
That's I.
I. Secretary two, the grade four, step G. Secretary one, the grade three, step C, and the grade three, step D.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
No, no.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasevic?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
So then, with Jim Thorpe, um, for office supervisor, I would make a motion to approve compensation as supervisor rate of grade two, step H, which comes to nineteen ninety-seven an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasevic?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
For the secretary two position, Jim Thorpe, the motion is for compensation at a grade four, step F, which comes to seventeen oh three an hour, which is what the county had proposed.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next is, uh, the first secretary one in Jim Thorpe. The motion is to approve her compensation at grade three, step B, fourteen sixty-nine an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
No.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasevic?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
And she's been here six years, so the next motion is to basically give her the same pay as someone who'd walk in the door today, which is a grade three, step A, at fourteen thirty-three an hour, which, as I've indicated, I think is unfortunate, but there'll leave me no recourse but to go to the lowest rate.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next, secretary one in Jim Thorpe. Again, this takes her to fourteen thirty-three an hour, is a grade three, step A. She's been here for three years.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next, um, is the position, office supervisor in Palmerton.
No, you didn't make the initial one.
Okay. So for office supervisor, the motion is to approve her, add a supervisor rate of grade two, step D, that's eighteen oh nine an hour, as a three point five five percent increase from what she is currently receiving. That's a motion.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
No.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasevic?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Same.
So for that position, um, then I would make a motion to approve her supervisor rate of a grade two, step C, seventeen sixty-five an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
And that is with the scale, right?
Yep.
Same as the-
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Same.
Next is secretary two in Palmerton. The motion is to approve her compensation at a grade four, step B, which is to an amount to a three percent increase.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
No.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasevic?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
It's unfortunate because, as I've indicated at the outset, what's even happening here is these people are getting lower paid today than they had last year. And that's the result of what this board is doing. So I just want to emphasize that. Next for that secretary two position, um, again, without any alternative, the motion is to approve her compensation at a grade four, step A, which is fifteen oh five an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next is the office supervisor one in Lansford. The motion is to approve her- oh, secretary one in Palmerton. Um, the motion is to approve her compensation at a grade three, step A, which is fourteen thirty-three an hour, which I believe is the same as what the county had, um, proposed in their handout of December eight.
I'll second that motion.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Now, under Lansford, office supervisor one, the motion is to approve compensation as supervisor rate, grade two, step O, amounts to twenty-three hours and seventy-four cents an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
No.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasevic?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next, for that same position, the motion is to approve compensation as supervisor rate of a grade two, step N, which is twenty-three sixteen an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasevic?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Secretary two, right? So the motion for secretary two in Lansford is to approve compensation at a grade four, excuse me, grade four, and apparently it's off the chart because this individual has been here for thirty-six years, and the increase is four point eight seven percent. That's a motion.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
No.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasevic?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
So then the motion for that same position, secretary two in Lansford, is to approve compensation at a grade four. Again, there's no step, because it's not on the chart. It equates to twenty-two hours and fifty-six an hour. And again, I remind you, she's been here for thirty-six years. And we're talking probably a three percent or less increase.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasevic?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next in Lansford, the secretary one position, um, the motion is to approve compensation at grade three, step A, which is fourteen thirty-three an hour, which is what was, I guess, suggested by the commissioner of their handout. The personal loss in the door is a thirteen point zero one percent increase. That's the kind of equities we're talking about.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasevic?
Mr. Honor, do you want to, if you want to, before I go ahead and vote it, obviously, it doesn't close until we're all done voting.
Well, I'm, I'm just looking at all these, and I think it's made out like we're not giving anybody any compensation here at all. But some of these that are going up to that fourteen thirty-three are getting ninety cents or whatever. It's not like they're not getting anything.
No, just to jump, that's a thirteen point oh one percent increase to that position. For other people who are here three and six years are getting far less.
And is this one comparable to? The other ones are not.
Yeah, this one, if I recall from the show, these were, were assessed to be at a, a three A, fourteen, uh, thirty-three based upon their classification.
Right.
Yeah, and that's why I said this one is getting fourteen thirty-three, whereas we had, back in Jim Thorpe, two people, they're three and six years, were getting fourteen thirty-three. So there's no recognition of their years of service to this family.
I will, I mean, I'll change it to yes for that, just for that.
Well, that one is yes. That's what you guys handed out.
Yes, yes. And that was my mistake. I was looking like what's on the original agenda is not- is not what I'm looking at here, like, the original agenda was sent out probably a couple of weeks ago.
Do I think this is what you guys...
Yeah, I know, yeah, but like what I have on the agenda, what was on, was a little bit different than, than what I had on the original, yeah, yeah. No, I'm all right with that, it's just that that one got mixed up because that was, and that's what, like, like I said, that fourteen thirty-three is people did get a raise through that, it's not like nobody...
I, I, I made that in my motion, I made that...
Yeah, that they didn't get anything, okay, I'm all right with that.
So now I believe we're under Weatherly.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're under Weatherly now? Under Weatherly now, Ellen?
Yes.
Okay. Office supervisor one, the motion is to approve compensation at supervisor rate of a grade two, which amounts to twenty-six dollars and fourteen cents. This person has been in, in, working for this county for thirty-three years. That's a motion.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
No.
Mr. Arner?
No.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
So for that same position, office supervisor one, the motion is to approve compensation as supervisor rate of grade two, again, it's not on the chart, it amounts to twenty-five dollars and fifty cents an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Arner?
No.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next is secretary two in Weatherly, to approve compensation at grade four, step B, which is fifteen forty-three an hour.
Second.
This physician has been here for six years, thank you, you're in the second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Oh.
Mr. Arner?
No.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
So for the same position, the motion then is to approve compensation at grade four, step A, which is fifteen oh five an hour, which I believe is what was on the handout of December eighth.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Okay, next is the secretary one in Weatherly, to approve compensation at grade three, step G, which is sixteen sixty-two an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
No.
Mr. Arner?
No.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
For that same position, since that failed, to approve compensation at grade three, step F, which is sixteen twenty-two an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Arner?
No.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
So we've had motion pass, so I'm going to have two secretary ones in Weatherly, and the motion is to approve them at a grade three, step A, which is fourteen thirty-three an hour, which I believe is the same as what was in the commissioners' handout on December eighth.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Now, next, J four, which is adult probation. And first, we can be chief adult probation officer. The motion is to approve compensation at supervisor rate of grade twelve, step Q, which is forty hours and sixty-two cents an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
No.
Mr. Arner?
No.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next is to approve compensation for that position at a grade, supervisor grade of twelve, step P, which is thirty-nine sixty-three an hour, which I believe is the same as recommended by the commissioners on December eighth.
Second.
Discussion. Judge Nanovic, when the chief adult probation officer took his position, was he aware of the duties and responsibilities of his predecessor to synchronize and coordinate some of the drug treatment court activities?
He knew that his predecessor was over-stretched and was taking very many positions, and there was no way he could do all the things his predecessor was doing. And his predecessor, as I say, was actually probably too thin for what he was doing. So yes, he was aware of some of the things his predecessor had done.
Right. Because I was under the assumption that the salary that we originally set was for him included the understanding, all other duties and responsibilities as, as assigned, which the precedent was set to manage that, and again, obviously, I'm setting something up for discussion later, but I just want to clarify.
I know exactly where you're going.
Yeah.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Arner?
And this is at the current salary, that's...
Thirty-nine sixty-three.
Yes.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
For thirty-nine sixty-three, yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next is the administrative assistant, and the motion is to approve compensation at grade five, step A, which is fifteen eighty an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
No.
Mr. Arner?
No.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
And I know the vote's already been taken, but this is a position where the county, for some reason, had put this at a grade three, whereas administrative assistants generally are a grade five. So my next motion then is to approve the compensation for that position at a grade three, step B, which is fourteen sixty-nine an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
The next position, J four, is adult probation technician. Motion is to approve compensation at grade four, step N, which is twenty hours and seventy-five cents an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
No.
Mr. Arner?
No.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
For that same position, the motion is made to award compensation at grade four, step M, which is twenty hours and twenty-four cents an hour. These are two point five step decreases from what I originally made, so you know.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Arner?
No.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
So if you have it approved, I'll go to the adult probation specialist. The motion is to approve compensation at grade three, step A, which is fourteen thirty-three an hour. And I believe that may be the same as what was suggested by the county.
This one was adjusted up to the three.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Okay. So this is a specialist, and okay, and fairly, I'm glad she's here, because she reminded, I don't want to misrepresent anything. The county has suggested a grade two, we're suggesting a grade three. Specialists being, I think, at that level, being all given a grade three in general.
Second.
And what, what is the difference, I mean, of that being classified? Is that any advantage to the employee? I mean, it's still the same pay?
Well, generally, a technician is a higher grade than a specialist, because a specialist is being doing, I believe, primarily secretarial type work, surgical work, whereas a specialist is not only doing the paperwork, the managing of it, but is also doing filing of it, input of it, things of that nature, so there's generally a different grade differentiation between those two. And, and as I've indicated, you know, the county had, has suggested a grade two, we were trying to keep all specialists at a grade three, which is why my motion is what it is, a grade three, step A.
But they were actually not.
But is there much difference between those two specialists? I'm a little confused myself.
Twenty-two specialists.
Is that what we're talking about, the probation specialist right now?
Yeah, we're talking about probation specialists, yes.
Versus the treatment court specialist that we'll get to in a few minutes?
Yeah, which is, which is, which is also, let me get here, I'm gonna, these lines are hard to read, which actually the county itself put under grade three, which is why we're suggesting that specialists, and the next one, the adult probation treatment court specialist. The county has a grade three, we thought the adult probation specialist should also do a grade three, it's the same, not only the same name, but it's the same category of type of work as a specialist, which we're trying to keep them uniform at a grade three.
There was a second.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was, yes, are we done discussing? A call for the vote? Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Excuse me, what was that?
Yes.
Mr. Arner?
No.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next is the adult probation treatment court specialist, to approve compensation at grade three, step A, which is fourteen thirty-three an hour, which again, I believe is the same as what was being recommended on December eighth handout.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next is the part-time sentencing guideline technician. The motion is to approve compensation at a grade six, step B, which is seventeen eighty-seven an hour. That is the exact same compensation that was approved by the salary board approximately two or three weeks ago. This is a grant position where you grant application, requires pay of eighteen dollars an hour. We had this discussion when that grant came before the commissioners, and closest we could get to that, according to the scales I was given, was seventeen eighty-seven an hour. I'm trying to keep it at seventeen eighty-seven an hour, grade six, step B. Again, for reasons that I don't really fully understand, because it's different than what was, the action was taken a few weeks ago, the county was to reduce it by seven point one six percent.
And just on discussion of that, I would agree with this, because I think here's one of the instances that we don't research enough to see what we should be putting in grants, what people should get paid. And if this was passed, I don't think we have any choice to do this in this situation. So I said there's so many things over this, this whole salary thing that isn't correct, and this is one of the things. And how can we go back on something we approved that's in a grant and now go back on it? Are there any repercussions if we would reduce it, the wage?
I, I don't know yet, I mean, the grant was submitted, saying these are the compensation rates every year, the grant was approved with that understanding. The amount that's been approved previously is not even the eighteen hours an hour, slightly less, but I think I was told at the time this was the closest we could get without going over the eighteen hours an hour, but it was approved several weeks ago.
Second. After the discussion.
I have no further discussion, unless anyone else on the board does.
I don't know what to say, but, I mean, I just want to hold on it, but I don't, I don't know if this is one of the things where our hands are tied, because we already committed at a meeting, are we reducing somebody's pay now? And is this one of the situations that it was done before the end of the year? Where does this fall in?
I mean, it was done before the end of the year, it's obviously just passed three days ago.
It is a vacant position, it's always one that could be readdressed if we feel we have a legal obligation to do eighteen dollars an hour, but no one has done that research. Just because we put in the grant application doesn't make it a legally binding contractual agreement to pay that amount, so I'd much prefer we vote no. Let it at sixteen fifty-nine as the study proposes, and then let the solicitor talk to the grant providing entity in regards to what our flexibility is in regards to...
And this could be brought up at another, at the next board meeting, I mean, at the next salary board.
I guess it can always be adjusted, but I don't know that this was in any study, on my permission, because I would just refer to, because this is a new position that was just created with a grant that was accepted by the county a few weeks ago, so I don't think it was an evergreen study, I don't, I don't know what study it might have been, totally unknown to me. Again, the application that was submitted for the grant was eighteen hours an hour, the board literally, two or three weeks ago, approved seventeen eighty-seven an hour. I don't know why three weeks changed that.
It's gotta be hard enough to fill this position, especially knowing that it might only be a temporary position to begin with, so I would suggest we all vote yes.
I think I made a motion, I don't know if there's been a second or not.
Yes, there's been a second. Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Arner?
I would say no, and this could be further discussion at another meeting.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
So now I believe we're under, under J five, which is juvenile court. The motion for chief adult probation officer is supervisor rate of grade twelve, step J, which is thirty-four eighteen an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
No, no.
Mr. Arner?
No.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Same position, a motion to approve compensation as supervisor rate of grade twelve. I? I, I'm gonna part time with the I versus Ls, thirty-three dollars and thirty-four cents an hour, which I believe is what was on the handout of December eighth.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next is juvenile court secretary two, a motion to approve compensation at grade four, step J, that's eighteen dollars and seventy-nine cents an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
No.
Mr. Arner?
No.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next motion for that position then is to approve compensation at grade four, step I, eighteen dollars and thirty-four cents an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
No.
Mr. Arner?
No.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next motion for that same position, juvenile court secretary two, compensation at grade four, step H, seventeen eighty-nine an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Arner?
No.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next is one clerical specialist in juvenile court to approve compensation at grade three, step A, fourteen thirty-three an hour, which again, I believe is the same as what was recommended on December eighth, which was made on handout.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severcek?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next is scheduled J six, domestic relations. Oh, that was just reminding me that according back to J four. J five, we had to, I had to make a motion to approve the on-call pay on J five, primary fifty dollars a day and back up thirty dollars a day.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
And adult probation, same thing, had to make a motion to approve on-call, primary fifty dollars a day, back up these thirty dollars a day.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Okay, next is domestic relations on J six. First position, domestic relations director. The motion is to approve compensation as supervisor rate of grade twelve, step G, which equates to thirty-one dollars and seventy-four cents an hour. I would say, in support of this motion, that under the study that was done by Evergreen, peers for domestic relations are paying thirty-two, thirty-three dollars and twenty-five cents an hour, which is twelve point five cents more than the current pay. The director, as the board knows, basically two-thirds of pay is paid by four gates.
Yeah, as, as part of the discussion, I'll remind the board members that our target was the forty-fifth percentile. That's all I have.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severchak?
No.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
So then for the director, I would move for approval, supervisor rate, grade twelve, step F, thirty dollars and ninety-six cents an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severchak?
No.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next for that same position, a motion to approve compensation supervisor rate, grade twelve, step E, thirty dollars and twenty-one cents an hour.
Yes. Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next position in domestics is the domestic relations assistant director. The motion is to approve compensation as supervisor rate of grade, excuse me, supervisor rate of grade nine, step C, which is twenty-four eighty-four an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severchak?
No.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next for that same position, the motion is to approve compensation at a supervisor rate of grade nine, step D, which is twenty-four twenty-three, which I think is the same on the December eighth handout of the county.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next motion is with respect to the intake officer two, to approve compensation at a grade eleven, step K, which is twenty-seven dollars and eleven cents an hour. This is reference to an employee who's been here for thirty-four years, is not safe to give.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severchak?
No.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Same position, motion to approve compensation at a grade eleven, step J, twenty-six forty-five an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severchak?
No.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Same position, the motion is to approve compensation at a grade eleven, step I, twenty-five dollars a day, cents an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severchak?
No.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next same position, a motion to approve compensation at a grade eleven, step H, which is twenty-five seventeen an hour.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
No.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Next is one administrative assistant. That's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking, so, I think I do combine these. One administrative assistant at fifteen dollars and eighty cents an hour, say grade five, step A, three domestic relations specialists, two fifteen oh five an hour, grade four, step A, and one domestic relations specialist, a fourteen thirty-three an hour, grade three, step A, those are all the same as what was suggested by the county commissioners on December eighth.
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
So, next is the motion, it's the salary position of one treatment court coordinator slash grant manager at eighteen dollars and nine cents per hour, into the grade S, step B. Treatment courts are overseen by Judge Matika, as we, the board knows. This includes both credit court and drug court. Judge Matika has advised me that if this coordinator position is not created and approved, that both these courts will likely cease, that they cannot operate without the treatment court coordinator. He has told me that the coordinator position is required by the AOPC or its function. And he recognizes the treatment court, that the position is mandated by the college of procedures manual, gathered by the court from the treatment court established. That the coordinators require team member for purposes of many federal and state trainings, no team members may attend, training without a coordinator. That the treatment court cannot seek grants without a coordinator, that they could, this, this position would oversee the overall operation of the treatment courts, including other diversionary programs. And it would relieve the chief probation officer, which I know is what Commissioner Lukasewicz has got in at of these duties. Previously, this was done in part, encompassed by other things that the prior chief, Mr. Parsons was doing. And as I indicated, he was overextended, and our current chief did not have the ability to take on this additional responsibility. So, the motion is, as I've said earlier, to approve the creation and compensation of a treatment court coordinator slash court grant manager at eighteen ninety-nine per hour, which is a step S, correctly a grade S four, step B. That's affected as of January third of today.
Second.
Discussion, so, someone, a treatment court coordinator to synchronize and coordinate the activities is essential. This position has not been properly classified by our HR department. It's clearly not a supervisory position, yet it is labeled as such. No indication I can find that that particular duty would require a full-time position. The existing adult probation office chief assumed the position, knowing full well the duties and responsibilities of his predecessor. Setting of the salary that he was receiving was based upon one of those functions to include the coordinator for the DPC, or the treatment court. Any grant manager, which is a significant part of this classification, should and must fall under the direct authority and supervision of the board of commissioners. That's all I have.
And would this position not be just the grand coordinator for the courts, for the treatment courts? Is that correct?
For the treatment courts and also a grant manager, I don't see why it would be the commissioners, in fact, the person who would actually be immediately above this person supervising the court coordinator, grant manager, would be Judge Matika, who is the person who the judge assigned to treatment courts. As I've indicated, Mr. Parsons, spread himself to things. I applied every effort he made, I'm not trying to be critical of him. But he was all over the place, trying to accomplish as much as he could for this county, he was a very valued employee. I hated to see him go, but he took another position where he was offered much more lucrative compensation than our county therefore. And our current treatment court chief does not have the time and the ability to do this. He indicated this, which is why we're asking this. I don't mean to be crying wolf, because that's not my intent. But I had an extensive discussion with Judge Matika about this. And he has assured me that if this position is not created and implemented, the specialty courts will cease in Carvin County, that includes veterans, that includes drug court. And again, I'm not trying to say you have to do this, I'm telling you, you know the full implications of not doing it.
I, I have.
As far as supervision, Commissioner Lukasewicz is correct, this person is not necessarily directly supervising other court employees. However, he is supervising other probation officers who have been assigned to specialty courts. The direct supervision of those people under probation is of chief probation officer, chief adult probation. But this person is supervising to some extent those people who have been assigned as probation officers to treatment court. This position is coordinating all the players, all the team members in treatment court, which is perhaps comparable, maybe not a technical supervisory of other employees, but they're supervising coordinating, I believe, eight to other, ten other team members, whatever they advise.
We can make the argument that almost any position in Carvin County supervises based upon the definition you're using. But the fact is, that individual doesn't evaluate or have the authority to discipline people. He or she is not supervising. On the portion in regards to the court grant manager, I sat in meetings with Judge Matika, Judge Serikos were present. They were hosted or managed by the public defender. Not once, when we were discussing a grant manager for the county, did the courts make the statement that the courts needed a grant manager just for the courts. So, the need isn't there, or it would have been clearly articulated during, during those meetings. I'd be more than happy to go look at those minutes again. But I am very, very confident that statement was never made, as a matter of fact, they seem to be very open to a grant manager that would serve the entire county. I also would find it hard to believe that within adult probation, there isn't an individual or individuals who have sufficient bandwidth available, where they could not assume the responsibility of a synchronizer and a coordinator of treatment court activities. It's just unrealistic to think that bandwidth is not available in one person in that office.
Well, I think we've had huge discussions on salary board meetings about the need for additional staff in adult probation, that they're overworked. We get audited by the state, like we do annually. They've told us that our number, our ratio of parole officers, probation officers, the people who are being supervised are multiples of what is recommended by the state, they are understaffed the way it is. To say they don't have, they do have the bandwidth, the bandwidth I think is not being realistic of the volume of cases they are supervised. I think we'd be feeling so, you know, we're a sixth-class county, we do the volume of a sixth, fifth-class county in terms of criminal work and oversight. The grant manager we're talking about, I was not in attendance at any of the meetings Commissioner Lukasewicz is referring to, so I'm not contradicting him. But I will tell you that I had a very direct, lengthy conversation with Judge Matika about this position, about the critical necessity for this position, that the grant manager would, would write grants for treatment court. Currently, the county is receiving certain grants for treatment courts, which are going to expire if they haven't already expired. So, that grant funding will cease without a court coordinator. And this grant manager would also file other grants for other positions for the courts if grants were available. So, I only relay on, because I rely upon Judge Matika, who has, I think these treatment courts have been in, in sight for three to five years, I think it is, for the position. My understanding is they are doing well, that people who go through them are doing well. I've heard compliments from people who are in attendance at how well it is received. And I hate to see it die, but that is what I'm told will happen if we do not have this treatment court coordinator.
I'll reference, direct the public to the Bible in Genesis, the word begat. And that's what happens with grants, right? And we've seen it here recently, a grant was accepted, and now we have two point five new employees in perpetuity. So, as we talk about additional grants, the public has to recognize, there comes a tax burden with each grant. Don't be fooled into thinking that's simply because it's a grant. One, you're not already paying for it, because your tax money is that grant money. And then secondly, you're going to see additional duties and responsibilities that the courts or others are going to say, require more manpower, more resources, because they're already taxed. So, how can you be asking for more? It doesn't pass the common sense test.
Well, I think part of the thing that has to be considered is what is the purpose of treatment court? How are people selected to, basically given, sent into treatment court? They're evaluated, it's where they can even get into treatment court, so we're referring to both veterans and drug courts. And they're evaluated to see what their past has been, what their convictions are, to see whether they are suitable candidates for treatment court. If they are, they go into treatment court. My understanding is that the percentage of individuals who have gone through treatment court and successfully completed is much less than the ordinary person who is out there. So, the question is, do treatment courts have a value, which I think is in part what Commissioner Lukasewicz is getting at. And if they do, and quite honestly, so again, with Judge Matika, as I was only, treatment courts are probably the best for a treatment we have in this county, they're not getting the equivalent treatment at the prison, and they're not getting treatment elsewhere. So, treatment courts are important. It's been the, the impetus of AOPC for a number of years to encourage counties to adopt treatment courts. We were one of the few counties who were later on the bandwagon to actually adopt treatment courts. Others were out there ten years ago or more, we've only been there three or four years. So, I know, I know Judge Matika has dedicated our treatment courts, and he's put a lot of time and effort into it, and he wants to see it continue.
Judge Nanovic, you misrepresent what I said. I never stated that drug treatment courts, did I even, even come close to implying that they didn't have value? Matter of fact, for the last three years, I know no commissioner who spent more time in the treatment courts. No one. So, obviously, I see the value, I recognize the value, value of that. So, I take offense to your misrepresentation of my comments.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what I misrepresented, but.
What you said, I did not, you, I was implying or stating I did not see value in drug treatments courts. When that was not, the record clearly shows what you stated. So, again, I'm defending myself, because it was a misrepresentation of what I said. So, for the record, I'm clarifying, that's not what I said, I made my point clear. I see the value in them. My issue is, first and foremost, that one, I believe it can be absorbed. I do not believe a full-time treatment court coordinator is necessary. And I also disagree with including as part of this, just to simply justify the position that a court-specific grant manager is necessary. The demand, the workload is not there. Sure, you can build it and create it, you can create the workload, everyone will fill their available space with work if they're hired. But again, it doesn't mean it's needed, it simply would become a want.
And I think, I think where I've been at, I've been in on some of these meetings, and since I've been here, I was always looking for a grant writer. And I thought in the discussions that we were trying to get a county grant writer that would help every department. And now we're adding one for just one department. I mean, I don't, you know, and when I was under the discussion before, and I don't know if Paul was involved in it, or some of them meetings, and I thought we were going in the direction to get a grant writer for the entire county. Now, here we sit, one position, I don't know what it's going to do. And to throw it up that it's pertinent to the drug courts, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts to get to the drug courts. You know, putting people at places where they got to be, or whatever kind of training, or, or, you know, what, what they have. I just don't see it. This position, how is it, how is one position going to help the whole county like what, what we were looking for? You know, and, and. And, and I think that, I think the impression, you look at, say, if, if one, if we need positions or grants for twenty-seven departments, each one could have two to three that each department would say, okay, this is what I would like, okay? So, that's fifty to sixty grants. Are we going to get fifty to sixty grants for treatment court? I don't know. And there are some grants that are ongoing. I think what we need a grant writer for is to search, search for the overall county, that it will help drug court. It will help domestics, it will help all of them, not just the one, one specific area. I don't know.
So, I don't necessarily disagree with having a countywide grant writer. I think that's something that should be pursued by the county, I think they should have done it by now. The reality is, it hasn't occurred yet. And the reality is that treatment court gets funded by grants in part, which are now dying or expired. That source of revenue is, is leading us. I suspect there are other grants out there that can be obtained for treatment court, which is what this treatment court coordinator will be pursuing. It may well be that at some point in the future, the county gets. It may well be that if at some point in the future the county gets a general grant writer for all offices in the county, that this would have to revisit, as I think the board knows. Salary board positions can be restructured in the future. Right now, we're proposing this to get grants to keep treatment court alive. I think what I said earlier is that in evaluating the importance of this position, part of the evaluation is the importance of treatment courts. And that that's important, that they are beneficial. I don't think, and the record will be what the record is, that I pointed at Commissioner Lukasewicz and said he is not in favor of treatment courts. I don't believe I ever said that. I said treatment courts are valuable, and I think, again, from what I've been told by Judge Matika, if we cannot get this position, we're going to lose our treatment courts in this county. And we got to deal with what we have now, not with what we may have in the future.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
No.
Mr. Note Stein?
Yes.
The next motion is to send a court computer information systems to establish the position of one IT specialist at seventeen forty two per hour, grade seven, step A, which will be effective as of January third. As I'm sure the salary board knows, the current court IT department has two employees, Becky, who's the chief supervisor, and one another, which actually is vacant because of position, person who had occupied that position, can offer a better position because of pay. And we've been advertising to get that position filled. I think we have actually an interview tomorrow, if I recall correctly. So we have two people there. We're asking to have another IT specialist in that department, in part because Becky supervises not only court operations, but non-court operations. So she does things in the clerk of courts, in the fire couriers, in the sheriff's office. Also, with the advent of COVID, there's been more Zoom and video conferences in court, which requires more technicians to set things up. So the motion is to establish an additional, which is one additional IT specialist at seventeen forty two an hour, grade seven, step A. So it appears as though there's no second?
Second.
Discussion. Dawn, has this position been classified by HR?
Well, there already exists a position that's similar, so it's a duplicate of a position that already exists in court here.
It's identical to the compensation, it was identical to the one I figured right there.
And it's an identical position to what they already have established.
So four county fall under the IT department of the Board of Commissioners. Four individuals, four positions, serve twenty one departments, three hundred individuals versus two individuals serving sixty, seventy individuals in courts, were the courts' numbers? For personnel?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two? I'm just trying to draw number comparison of technicians to individuals needing IT services. Okay, thanks.
So I think that demand is there, the need there is there. Like I said, she's not only overseeing court functions, but also non-court functions. But anyway, there's been a motion and a second, so I would think we should take the vote unless it's first discussion that.
No, and I think we had discussion on combining both ITs or trying to do something.
There was some suggestion.
And I mean, I see the need for it. Not that I'm in agreement with adding another position, but I think if this position is added, there has to be some kind of agreement, because I know there's discussion between the sheriff and everybody else who's in charge of the IT for everybody. So if this is passed, are we going to move forward and try to strain all this out?
I think we've been trying to do that for over a year. My recollection is, if I'm wrong, my recollection is wrong, is that Becky had been doing the sheriff's work for several years. I think over a year ago, we had this discussion that she doesn't have the manpower in her office to do all these things. And we were promised, I believe, that the county IT department would take that over and do that for the sheriffs. Unfortunately, it hasn't happened in more than a year has passed. And so again, we've offered for a number of years, excuse me, we've requested for a number of years that we could give an additional IT personnel in that office so she could fully do her function.
Okay, call for the vote, Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
No.
Mr. Note Stein?
Yes.
My final motion.
You're out of time.
Sorry, we got to reset.
This would be a non-motion, very well, it's not completely non-motion, which I should edit when I say that. But it is to set the positions and salaries covered by bargaining unit, act the court for a professional employee, union effort, exhibit C. In fact, with January first, two thousand twenty-three, with one adjustment, that is, I'm deleting from that motion if I concede. If you can see where I have to go, I'm deleting the reference to the reentry specialist, which I previously, I know, I know when that position was approved back on January sixth, two thousand twenty. I've seen this at the meeting, so I'm not disagreeing with this. It was for a three-year period, is to expire on January fifth of this year, two days from now. And I know when that came up, I think Commissioner Honor had made the motion to terminate it as of January third. I voted against it. I stated reasons at that time, but I wasn't sure if that was consistent with the grant or if that would create grievance issues. So I don't include, I'm not including that in my motion, I mean, that can be a separate motion by someone else. But I don't want to include, I want to be consistent with what I've done in the past. So my motion is to basically approve exhibit C one, omitting the reference to the reentry specialist.
Have a second?
Second.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Severchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Note Stein?
Yes.
Yeah, I would think there's going to be another motion from one of you, with respect to the reentry specialist. But that's up to you. I think there's value to the reentry specialist as well, and I've said that in the past. And we did, we filed services previously with the grant, and we have two additional probation officers under the grant, as well as the guideline, court timer. But I am fully aware of what actually has been previously said, this is going to go to the wayside, but I'm not going to report.
Is there any urgency that we do it today, or can it be done possibly?
My belief is, you know, Mr. Chairman, is that it's going to expire both by the terms of when it was created. That's why, one of the reasons I didn't vote in favor of Commissioner Honor, as well as by the motion that Commissioner Honor made a few weeks ago to terminate it as of December. I think it's dead, quite frankly.
Yeah, and my, like, my thoughts on this, I mean, I see the carbon monroe pipe, drug and alcohol, and connected with our county. I think somewhere along the line, it has to go in a different direction. People are being helped, and I know I talked to Paul a lot about it. And I'm not, this position for me doesn't work for me. There are other ways of reentry. And I think if there is a position created, we ought to have it to our county, not to other counties. So I don't, you know.
I thought this position was specific to Carvin County.
Well, it is, but, but is it actually working? I mean, it was vacated, just let go for six months, and then somebody was hired, and then they quit. So these are one of the things that, if it would be established as the same position, maybe we should evaluate that, and what would the job description be for that? You know, like I said, I just see it, something has to be changed here. You know, and.
I'm not arguing with you, I'm just saying, I think the decision was made already. And I don't see why it's even on schedule C, but I'm trying to be consistent with my past actions.
Exactly. And I'm not giving up on that idea, but I don't think today's the time to do it.
So anything else for this salary board involving the courts? So thank you very much for your time, I'm glad you took the course, otherwise I'd probably be drawing over two days. I apologize for all the other commissioners who are here.
I know one thing, I'm taking a slight.
And I appreciate the courtesy of discussions, I really do.
One second.
Go ahead. I can listen.
What I would, I guess what we should do at this particular time, it's four thirty already, after four thirty, we aren't going to get to finish this evening the way it's going. I would recommend we recess till nine AM tomorrow morning.
I cannot be present at nine AM, not before ten AM due to other obligations.
And just to clarify, it's not a recess, you would actually be adjourning to. You're not adjourning the meeting itself, but you're adjourning to a date and time certain. So just, just.
So what time would you be?
Ten o'clock.
I'm fine.
How about the elected officials? So we would have to adjourn?
Yes, we'll need a motion to adjourn to a date and time certain.
So what's the issue with that?
There's no need to re-advertise.
So we're okay with not advertising?
As long as it's done on the record here, that's, that's.
What about the commissioners' meeting?
Likewise, if you want to make both motions together.
The commissioners' meeting isn't opened until salary board is.
So then motion to adjourn until Wednesday, January fourth, at ten AM prevailing.
That motion then?
Hey, Mr. Severchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Note Stein?
Yes, motion to adjourn the commissioners' meeting till after completion of salary. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Is he making, I think we do both of them.
I don't think it's strictly necessary, because she said it was.
Yeah, it has to.
About.
And I guess technically, the commissioners' meeting, well, I don't know. I don't want to, like, no, it didn't happen. Okay, I'll second. The commissioners' meeting did not happen.